And the following we thank for this day and for the opportunity you've given us to come out and work on city business tonight. Help us to conduct ourselves in a way you'd see fit and to conduct city business in a proper way. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Carrie Brady?
Aye.
Chris Wood?
Aye.
Al Moore?
Aye.
Everybody's pretty well, I'm getting the clock tonight. You won't be here tonight. Okay? The approval of March twenty-four minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Have a motion and second to approve February, uh, March twelfth minutes. Roll call. Chris Wood?
Aye.
Carrie Brady?
Aye.
Al Moore?
Aye.
Okay. Financials for February are here. We're starting to get some of the money back in to the street department. It's been pretty good. Uh, you got a two hundred and what was it, sixty-eight thousand?
Mm-hmm.
The check for the work we did on, uh, the bridge on the old seventy and the coverts. On, uh, Rock Creek Road, two hundred and some thousand dollars. That check finally coming back in today. Uh, the highway department on the sidewalk project, that is about finished. We paid almost, we got checks for it as well, Eddie.
Yeah, we just had a bit of trouble with it issued.
Yeah, they don't want to issue up last checks, but, uh, there's about two hundred thousand dollars we still got to get back in street department funds. Uh, they're that far behind on payments too, so, uh, on those grants. So, you're gonna have almost half a million dollars coming back into the account. Account looks broke right now. It is broke right now, but it, the reason is the reimbursements haven't come back. And if you look at your expenses and water and service, it's way up. We replaced a lot of equipment. We'll go over some more of that tonight if need. Hopefully that's gonna slow down all these days. That's your two big areas to...
On bottom page two, actually, page three. How much you took from one of the net income, one fifteen? January twenty-four, but then twenty-three, fourteen thousand, seven thirty-eight. There's a hundred thousand dollars difference. Is that, what is that hundred thousand? Where did that come from roughly?
Your franchise tax was up. Um, I don't know what all the fran- Frank, Brenda, they all not come in last year and you come in some this year, cause you have twenty-one thousand dollars, that's all you had this time last year. You got fifty thousand in so far this year on franchise tax. So that's, that's twenty-eight thousand dollars of it. Uh...
Police grant, there's no twenty thousand, police grant, most likely.
Yeah, I have a police grant come in that wasn't there last year. Eddie and Brenda, you're put, we're putting the sales tax, the percentage of sales tax money that broke down.
In each.
That's, it's gonna come, the sewer department, our street department, if you look at it, it's gonna be less. General funds will be more because you're paying to the parks and you're paying to the, uh, dogs.
Animal control, the parks, police.
So all those, that's gonna be up, but when you look, get overlooked, your income in the street, it's gonna be down, cause that's where you took it from. She's paying a percentage of that figured out. It's moving each month by percentage, like it should be. Like we thought it would be. Whatever that percentage was is what's getting moved into those accounts each month. Sanitation's up a little bit, but we've got one employee less in there right now. Uh, we're two employees short, uh, from where we usually are. We're looking to hire instead. Haven't found anybody to hire yet. One of those comes out of sanitation and one of those comes out of, uh, street.
They were three, one, four, I had to get the new rates.
So you want to, but you want to. Are they, they're new now or any, so, we probably, you can commission the hoods and hives to, maybe they'll start there or give away.
Yeah, I mean, if there's something new, we're gonna with the hives, you know, so.
That's the main, I don't know if it, what else move.
There's, I think, those two, I don't know, each one's over there. That should be right, do right now, and then there's two of the farmers, also, they're small and, they're also new.
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion except the February balance sheet. Have a motion and second, roll call. Chris Wood? Carrie Brady? All three. As y'all know, I called y'all all on the phone. Two Saturday nights ago was one of my most pleasant experiences. I liked to experience being the mayor. On Thursday of that week, or on Tuesday of that week, one of our high service pumps, a new, one of the new motor on it started pouring oil. So we shut it down and TJ had the motor pulled to send off, to have, they pulled the motor on Thursday to have them come pick it up on Monday to get it fixed. We had a electrical surge come through the system in one phase where electricity didn't go, two phases were up fine, one didn't hold up good. And all of our safety equipment kicked everything out, but guess what? Our hundred twenty-five horse high service pump that left running. So at ten o'clock at night, we lost our second pump. So I got on the phone and found, uh, we called everywhere and we finally found this Butterfield out of Texas County said he had a buddy, either him or Monroe, Louisiana, or Memphis would have these motors. He called me back to, to go to, uh, West Monroe and get these, and he had a new one and he had to rebuild one. And we asked if he'd come down there, whether we could get there, cause we were out of water, or we're gonna be out of water, but anyway. They opened up for us at three o'clock Sunday morning. We got down there at three o'clock Sunday morning and brought the motors back. Both of our pump motors are in the shop, our other pump motors that we had. When you rebuild those pump motors, you normally don't die two of them at a time. We've never had a spare. We'll have two now, maybe, cause if the one motor didn't get too hot, we'll have it rebuilt, the one motor that dropped the oil. Hopefully it's just a seal, because that motor's only two years old. But the twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty, uh, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents is what? One new motor and one rebuilt. Hundred twenty-five horse motor cost us. They charged a hundred and sixty-five dollars bringing a employee out and opening the building up at three o'clock on a Sunday morning, which I greatly appreciate. Brett and I had a long, nice drive that night. It was nine and a half hours from the time we left till we got back to, to the shop up here. But anyway, y'all told me to get them. We didn't have any choice to get them, but I mean, that's over my expenditure rate. We go please.
Did we figure out why exactly why did it?
No, have not yet. He, uh, TJ's gotta go back to his parameter of his BFD. His BFD should have kicked the thing off. All the other pump stations, every one, every pump station we had went offline. The sewer plant went offline, Hilltop went offline, uh, Twin Bridges went offline, all the raw water pumps at the sewer plant went offline, the pond pumps went offline. Everything kicked offline with just one motor. And it burned it. You couldn't touch it for... Uh, we pulled the motor nine hours later, still so hot you couldn't hardly touch it. We don't know if that motor's gonna be rebuildable. It's in the shop. The one that just lost the oil in it.
Probably just a seal.
Is probably just a seal, but we didn't have a motor. We have a pump running. We only got two high service pumps. We had one running, so. These motors are both our pumps, nevermind. And I will have a deal, I've told them to rebuild them. I'm not gonna throw that one motor away, that old motor, if it's rebuildable.
I make a motion to replace it.
Motion second, two second. Chris Wood?
Aye.
Al Moore?
Aye.
All three.
We were in no real position to negotiate.
Yeah, it was in a vacancy.
I'm thinking of the guy that we never bought a pump motor from, cause we usually work with a company out of Pine Bluff. And we've never bought a motor from this guy. And I called him up and said, I need to bring a check, a credit card. He said, no, don't deal with that, buddy. He said, come get your motors. He said, I'm not worried about the city. So we have the motors.
Fairly good in senior financial.
But anyway, alright. Next thing on the agenda, y'all approved to buy this equipment by phone. Y'all need to prove it, that would, uh, we approved this last. Did we approve this last?
We approved this last.
Okay, then that's not in our...
It's in minutes.
Okay, the other two tickets, uh, these are just Jenkins. I just want y'all to look at them. They're not either one gigantic, but y'all want to know what we're paying for it to have fixed. First Jenkins ticket was installed pumps. It said it was pump station, new motors and check valves. Uh, we bought the pumps, of course, on the pump station. We moved one used pump from one pump station to there and put one new pump station, one, one new pump at one pump station. And one used one, so we've got two pump stations. It's got one new pump, one new pump. And then the census phone programming that's controlling the, uh, we're getting back on our, uh, so the operator can start telling the other man, uh, we had a pump that the census alarm kicked off on. And, uh, TJ, I called him up and I said, look at that, and he said, okay. The census phone sensed that, kicked the second pump off. We didn't even have to go check it, so. That's what those are doing, is saving us call outs. And he can watch the pumps off on his phone, what's going on as we get these up. Uh, and he can tell, he can start pumping from his phone. Uh, that equipment is just now starting to all get hooked up and working. And then at the, we had a starter go out on the, uh, digestive blowers at the sewer plant, and that's labor to put it back in. That ticket. And then the census phone, uh, transducer. Uh, the transducers all go in at all the pump stations. Uh, that's what's controlling, can tell you what your levels are reading. And then so, you've got five census phone units that are being put in.
This is the third or the fourth, this is the third one that's gone in, right? Or the fourth?
There's five of them he's paid for. I don't know for sure how many of them. I know he, he's got the cemetery lift station, I think, working. He's got, uh, he's got the one that gives us the most trouble working, uh, dollar lift station. They're in the process of getting put in.
I think it's the third one.
There's five, and then the sewer plant, you're gonna buy a total MXU unit to get it all running. We'll discuss that, show you what it's gonna be in the morning.
Make a motion to approve the end of this Jenkins file?
A motion except Jenkins gravel windows. Roll call. Al Moore?
Aye.
Chris Wood?
Aye.
Carrie Brady? All three. Okay, Salt Creek baby. Y'all asked me to get prices on two roads. We do still have under, uh, our grant money that should be here for next year to get, uh, county line road redone in First Street. Uh, that might be the reason we don't wanna bother those roads this year, because that's already got a grant applied for it, just rolled over. And we're like number six in funding at thirty-eight for next year, so we should get that no problem. Republic Road and Hillside Road are two worst roads we have in town. And they're not cheap getting worked on right now. If you look at the leveling, the leveling on each of those two projects is strictly nothing but patchy. And I called Jason Efer, and if you look at, if you look at the second bid, the second sheet on this, that we paid Salt Creek last year compares to the prices that we, uh, paid them to do work last year for us, it was under state bid. And Jason said, you will not get this bid any cheaper. This is exactly the prices that state spec for city streets is going out for right now. And he said, well, Salt Creek, you did it for your last year, and they'll do the state spec job for you without us being there. He said, these prices look high, but it's up twenty percent from last year. And he said, that's just where they're going. But for instance, to compare the hundred and eighty-five dollars on Republic Road a ton. We paid a hundred and sixty-five dollars a ton for it last year on, uh, Grant Farm Road, but you're up twenty percent. And he said, that's what it's up. And then the third sheet in that, to help your money showing in the budget, with our heirs that get litigation money check come in Thursday. You've got that two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars back in the street fund account, so we will not have to go to UCDs if y'all wanna do these projects. This was what y'all asked me to do, and Jason said it won't be cheaper next time you get any value bid. He said, next year when I get a grant money, it will probably be higher. That is our two worst roads. That's not, definitely not the two.
Hillside Drive back. I don't know if anybody else has been on that really good.
Not yet.
If you look at Hillside Drive, there's two hundred and five tons of asphalt to be repaired. And only five hundred and fifteen tons, cause once they do what's called leveling, that's what they gotta do underneath the paving. And there's only five hundred and fifteen tons of asphalt to put a total pavement, two inches of pavement on it. You go up there and look at Republic, there's only six hundred and fourteen tons. It's a longer road, six hundred and fourteen tons of overlay and only a hundred and twenty tons of patch. So, there, and he's charging you more per guard to, more per ton to do that, because there's a lot more prep work to do on that road. It's gone. If you let it go anymore, really, you're gonna have to pull up there with the motor patrol and start trying to blade, oh, blade what's left off and get something. That or the, that's the two streets. That's two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, ninety dollars.
You're saying we have the money to do this without touching any of our reserve?
Yes, because your money's starting to come back in to the street department now. You got the two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars.
Make a motion to approve this.
Have a motion?
We asked you to, and it ain't getting no cheaper to do this stuff, so.
Have a motion and second, roll call. Chris Wood?
Aye.
Al Moore?
Aye.
Carrie Brady? All three. This is a little deal I would think you'd want me to go ahead and do. I know we're tied over money and, and parks. Uh, the gentleman from Daders Playground's come down the other day. He's trying to work us up. He's gonna be one of the companies that bid on the thumb park. And he was down the other day and he went over and looked at our playground equipment that's in the park today. Uh, three thousand and eighty-one dollars and ten cents will repair the park equipment we have in existence operating at the old park right now. I can order that. I think it's a good thing. I think we need to get the park up.
How much you say?
Three thousand and eighty-one dollars and ten cents. The swings over there gotta be took down. They are gone. The kid swinging there, it's getting dangerous. Those chains are, go there and look at them there. They're not in good shape. But, uh, that's, he gave us a quote on just getting that stuff fixed. If you want me to do that, I'll do it.
Now, this is just, this is just us buying equipment and putting it in.
Yes, we gotta put this in, that's what I, yeah. But there's anything to change in the, the backs is across the top of the post. He said, those are worn up. They need to be changed. And then you put the chains and the seats. And this puts the seesaw equipment back in. It's not even anything left of over there, other than the bar that comes up by the ground and goes down. That'll put the seesaws back in. Now that don't put handicap material around the seesaws. But we don't have that. We don't have any, uh, not handicap, but, uh,
Underlaying.
Underlaying is not around that. It's not around those two smaller swings.
It does get it to where it looks halfway respectable.
It's usable, half-respectable. It does not have the, it's not gonna put any of the mat underneath them. But it gets it where it can be used. We could get, I guess somebody gets in trouble more, but it gets it where it can be used at least. Okay? Have a motion or have a second?
Have a second, uh, second.
Roll call. Chris Wood?
Aye.
Al Moore?
Aye.
Carrie Brady?
Aye.
All three. If you look at that next drawing. The, uh, census phone that was working at the sewer plant and the HOC equipment that was working at the sewer plant has, was turned off five years ago and we're trying to get all back working. Uh, we're actually gonna put a little bit more on the new, uh, CPU unit that we're going, that we can order that's cheaper than the census phone for this application. We're gonna put some more, uh, smart, what's it called? Smart, uh, smart relays in. So for instance, where we keep busting on the chlorine and the dechlor. Our operator will be able on his phone saying, hey, my dechlor's running too high. I need to turn that down. My chlorine's running too low. I need to turn that up. He's gonna be able to turn that up and down from his phone at home without, and we're gonna be able to adjust that if we need to adjust it every hour. We can adjust it. I would not hope he's setting up all that long, doing it every hour, but he will be able to check.
He's chasing that thing. Sometimes it can be worse than...
But we're getting it to where he can work and the alarms are gonna call him back like they should be. If you look at everything, everything that's right there, right here, and right there is what, uh, is not working that we like having work. I don't have an exact price on it. It's not super expensive, cause the wiring's out there for it. And, uh, the new smart ports or smart relays. Uh, this system can be put in with some cheaper equipment. The smart relays are a lot cheaper than what it used to be when they was putting census phone equipment in.
Question. Uh, does, uh, surely it does, but does this, does this thing have like a built-in default to where like if you had a situation where somebody just accidentally set something wrong on their phone that it, didn't just mess everything up? In other words, they had to, every hour, every hour or two, it would go back to some kind of a default?
He'll have a default program once he gets it set that he can blow back, but the operator, you're not gonna give access to these programs except for an operator. I'm not gonna have access to this.
Right, I understand.
But if he, if the operator rolling messes a setting up, he's gonna rolling mess a setting up. He's gotta be an operator.
Right.
Now then, you have a master program. You can go back and reset everything. I won't, I would not think that would ever happen, but if it did, that, um... I think you're probably looking at the time to get all that equipment in, probably roughly twenty grand.
It says, okay, up at the top at the head of the plant, it says flow meter. We put a flow meter up there too?
That is a next range, and, uh, yes. Hang on a second. Flow meter? You're gonna get a meter that, right now, the bar screen that we have out there right now, which works well, it works, but it's on a timer.
Yes, I understand, yep.
So, the bar screen says come on. Is there any water coming into the plant? No, so the bar screen's out there and runs, there's no, uh, coming in. The timer kicks it off, then the water comes into the plant. The bar screen's not working. So we are gonna put this, we're not gonna put a meter.
It should work off flow instead of...
That's what we're changing it to, right. We're gonna take it off the timer, because what you're doing right now, the, it's working on a time clock. And the bar screen, it ain't got no water coming into it. If you run it, you're running with no, nothing coming through, or it's time to kick off, it's not running, there's water coming through. That's defeats the purpose of the bar screen. Uh, so that will have, that's not gonna have, I would like to eventually someday put a, a meter in, a mag meter in eventually, but that's not, we're not looking at that right now. If y'all don't understa, there are a bunch of stuff there. If you don't understand some of that, I might have to get DJ or TJ to have to explain what we're trying to get controlled out there to get the plant back working, but, um... Y'all can look at that and have any questions. I ain't gonna go down on the money on this tonight. This, this is what we're gonna, this will have, the sewer plant, when we get through with this. We like the two small clarifiers repainting, and we gotta put some, uh, control valves on them that are rusted apart, broke off, two different, uh, valves are broken on each of those clarifiers. It's gotta be fixed. This is a lack of maintenance, but those will be fixed in this project.
I'm assuming it just says digestive blowers. I'm assuming it's gonna be high temp, control.
Yeah.
Fault.
Yes.
Okay.
We're unlimited. This, this new controller, smart controller he's got will do about, I forgot what he said, six thousand of some kind of functions and twenty-four thousand of the other kind in that one controller. They're done with super smart now. They're not super expensive.
Well, if you go back and look. I think they were s- Let me tell you right here. Smart relays with expansion mode. You're looking at seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for this.
Yeah, I think, you'll need that.
Same one. You're using the same one for pump stations you are there.
Yeah, but this, you'd need on the, other than the, than the one smart piece, you need one, two, three of those, you know, you'd need.
Right, well. Yeah.
One, two, three.
I got you.
If I'm understanding it right. And those are seven hundred and, uh, the CPU, maybe two thousand dollars or so.
We've never actually had this much control this way on the plant. And when you're not there is your biggest, it's, it's your biggest fault, because over the years we've left, say we leave at four o'clock, we come back the next day with no alarms, no nothing, we come back the next day and, well, guess what? It's ran over somehow, because one of your clarifiers got stopped, one of the tubes got stopped up or something like that. It is, this is very needed. Kinda like you know a price on it, but.
Since the valves have gotta be rebuilt on those two small clarifiers today, we're actually gonna have to actually wait for them to, so if you see a, uh, a clarifier starting to overflow, you can raise or drop the tubes.
Yep.
From the phone. So I'll get you more of them. That is not gonna be one of our bigger expenses. I just want you to know that was coming. The next big expense on the water plant is our river pumps. One of those has been rebuilt probably fifteen years ago, and one of them is the original pump that was put in when the plant was built forty years ago. That pump right now that hasn't been rebuilt is, the plant's supposed to be upgraded to two meaning gallon a day pump. Those are one point two meaning gallon a day pumps. Don't be able to run one pump without running both. Right now, running both pumps, we're getting about eight hundred thousand gallons of water a min, uh, eight hundred gallons of water a minute with both pumps running. We've got one that's doing about six to seven hundred gallons, and the other one's doing between two and three hundred. It's never been rebuilt. To go to a two meaning gallon a day pump like we need to, you gotta go from a twenty horse pump to a thirty horse pump. Uh, because that river has trash that sometimes has topped that pump up. Uh, they're suggesting we put a BFD on it with a transducer in it. So if there's something goes on the flow, instead of burning a pump up, we cut the pump off. And it will be hooked up to the pump that's left in as well as the new pump. One transducer will run both. And it will be hooked up to the pump that's left in as well as the new pump, one transducer will run both, both pumps.
Most of what you're saying is the two pumps we have are, are really running inefficiently.
We got one that's supposed to be pumping about a thousand gallons a minute that's doing somewhere around eight hundred. We got one's supposed to be pumping around a thousand gallons a minute that's pumping about two hundred. It's worn, I mean, it's been in there for forty years.
One's at twenty or thirty percent.
Right.
Yeah, I got you.
And we can't make it this summer at nine hundred gallons a minute.
Yeah.
We're running seven hundred, two thousand gallons a day right now.
Then you should be running close to seven hundred or more per pump.
So, the one pump I'm not suggesting we do anything with, we can, we get one upgraded and, and, uh, the other one's been in fifteen years and still, both pumps are still running. But you don't have to rebuild one of them, you, I mean, you, you rebuild it and just take a thousand million gallons a day, it's not where the plant's been designed to go, we gotta take it to two million, because that's what we're supposed to be doing in the plant. The pump without your discounts, forty-nine thousand, five forty-seven, that doesn't have sales tax and freight on it, and that's not installed or the DFD. The sales rep says this pump, the city'll get a discount on it, probably down to forty-two thousand. And then you gotta put the sales tax, it puts you be four hundred, four thousand, two hundred dollars, and you gotta put, doesn't four thousand dollars freight on it. So your freight, your sales tax will put you back close to the forty-nine thousand.
Pump is the problem, I would have stopped up somewhere, it is the pump.
We're gonna make absolutely sure we're not, but we do not think so. Before we proceed, we will, the one, if one pump's doing three times what the other one is, it's not stopped up, something's wrong with the one pump. And it has not been, that pump hasn't been rebuilt for years, hadn't it done? It's run, 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 and you run with all that dirt in it, it's, it's been a good pump. And then the DFD and the labor change and put in, you're probably gonna be out another twelve to fifteen thousand.
Right now, if I'm understanding everything you just said, right now, our saving grace is that we're, we're filling tanks basically twenty-four hours a day, but if we ever started, if you, you took that out of play, if we ever started running deficits, we never could get caught up with the pump.
We can't.
You got just.
This summer.
That's right, yeah.
This summer, the only, the only saving grace we've got in the summertime is to have a pond to draw out of. We're not staying caught up with our water coming out of the river.
I got you, yeah.
And we can't keep doing that. Right now, our production has not gone under seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day, I don't know, we got leaks, we got people using water, we haven't found lots of leaks, we're still looking for them. But right now, we're running seven hundred, we're running almost at what the river capacity is, the plant will do a million, raise it to a million and three, take it to two million. We got the plant re-raised to a million and three, and it's running at that right now. Which is half of what the raw water pumps are bringing into you. But that is the price of the pump, and you probably won't, your discount's gonna take it down to about forty-two thousand.
Yeah.
But then you gotta put the sales tax and you gotta put the freight back on it, so it's probably not gonna be much of that. And the labor to get it put in, and the DFD and learn the, the transducer is gonna be around twelve to fifteen thousand. TJ will be doing that work for you, and this pump you're buying direct from, uh, who is it? It's, uh, Corn Main, but that's not who it's called.
Huh?
Corn Main, it, not Corn Main, uh.
You don't say Corn Main is Corn Main.
No, Corn Main is Corn Main, yeah, uh, who we buying the worm root stuff from?
Oh, Tim, Tim Carden.
Tim Carden is the rep that we're, he's turning his own or other front, the worm root pumps. He's got all your sewer plants. Is who you been buying those from?
And y'all, y'all are gonna chipmunk, because I'm with him, it's, you're only gonna, you're only gonna put out as much as you got access to, to, and so y'all gonna make sure that we don't have some kind of a, do, do both of them pumps, do they run off of the same intake or is there a two separate intake? No, it's, it's same, it's same intake, here's how it works, the same intake, it's, so that well is like forty-eight foot deep. Okay. Okay, and you've got a wall in the center of it, and one pump pulls out on this side and the other pump pulls out on this side. But it's, the wall doesn't go all the way, right, so you got a valve right in the middle that pours water in from the river, it fills the whole, well, it don't fill it all with it, but anyway, that's what you draw out of there the whole time. Um, with that being said, you still could have trash that come in there and stop up one side versus the other, you know what I'm saying? That's the only thing I care about, I.
We've got, excuse me.
Wasn't but five years ago.
Yeah, we were popping those screens we made though.
I was down at the bottom of that thing along with DJ and even, even TJ and all the rest of us, we was taking turns getting it all put down the bottom and cleaning the crap out of it. We cleaned it completely out five years ago. Yeah.
But we have since made sure all the screens are back on and.
Actually, but you got experience.
Well, wasn't very, wasn't experienced, anyway, it was, it wasn't experienced yet.
We will make sure that those are checked, and then also the, uh, transducer will not allow you, if, if it sees a water level dropping in there, it'll cut the pumps. Either slow the pumps down or cut the pumps off.
Yeah.
The transducer is not, we have no safety valve on those pumps as we speak. They're on run, they're gonna run until you turn them off. There's no float switch or anything on those, when the operator sees the pump's low, he turns the pumps on, they run till the operator turns the pumps off. Because that, if you fill in a pond, you're not filling the tank, you're still in the big pond. But the transducers will, um, he, with the transducers, he'll set those to where if something's happening to the water level, you'll kick, you'll kick the pump, either slow the pump down or kick the pump off. And that will be something you added that's not in there right now.
Yeah. Only time the labor runs dry is if you're not giving enough coming in, but you're, you're gonna have to be pretty darn hard.
Or you have blockage.
Something, yeah.
A blockage, yeah. We can backwash, so I gotta set up the backwashing of the screens now, like years ago, you wouldn't have been backwashing, and now you can backwash.
Very, very cool.
Oh, yeah.
The only sad thing about those screens are if they fill those screens full of rocks and debris when they start backwashing from what had been in there. Over now, at the bottom end of those screens, and you don't have as much screening as you used to have, but we can't do anything about that. But he's added two sixteen-foot screens.
Yes.
On it that wasn't on there.
That was the two years ago?
Yeah. So we've got the two twenty-foot screens, it's been in there forever, and then TJ put, city and Ashton took some out, they gave them to TJ and he put them in for us up here. We've got sixteen more feet of screen than the city's ever added there. That is laying on the bottom of the riverbed where ours are actually in the ground. I need to know if y'all will proceed to get this or what you wanna do, because I'm not ordering something without y'all's permission, I bet, this is something I don't have to do tonight.
I will make a motion to pass this as long as y'all do, really just make sure that, that is the whole problem.
We know that's a problem with the water pump. We're not gonna replace the other pump, so they're still pumping six hundred, seven million a minute, we're not replacing them. I wouldn't replace, I wouldn't.
I'll send you that.
Motion is second.
Carrie Brady? Chris Wood?
Aye.
Any more?
Aye.
I don't think.
All right. The next thing you see, see, I hope you can read these colored sheets. We have been through and researched our main infiltration that we can identify that we think is leaking for infiltration on the sewer that we have the money approved to do the sewer project with. These are the lines that are either truss or clay pipe in our system.
The red ones?
Huh?
The red lines?
The red lines. So if you see a street that's got a red line on it, we have identified, and that's all the money we got.
That means we're gonna be digging up my front yard?
Yep, it's gonna be digging up your front yard.
That's not cool.
Maybe they'll be fixed right when they get to it, but anyway, they're gonna be digging up a lot of people's front yards or backyards. This truss pipe was put in, what, in eighty?
Well, before my time.
Wait, I'm not, I'm not picking on Sharon, this was put in, this was put in when Sharon was mayor, so when was Sharon mayor? Uh.
Soon down to.
Eighty-three or four?
Yeah.
I thought she'd been mayor for fifty years.
But anyway, they, they come to her and told her when they did this project, PBC came in and bid exceptionally high, and the engineer said, oh, let's use this new truss pipe. It's the latest and the greatest thing in the world. And so they put truss pipe in, well, it's all failed. Everybody that pushed, every city that put truss pipe in is out to replace it, and we're unfortunately in that boat. And we still got some clay pipe in this that was back put in maybe in the forties or fifties that's, uh, up there behind Chris's house, is clay pipe. That section lying in there, there's some other sections of clay pipe in there. We pulled the manholes and we think this has got our worst problem. This is not going to fix all the infiltration. This is three million dollar worth of work, and that's what the grant, that was, whatever the grants are, what the engineer figured out. And he said, that's what you need to bid, because that's what you can get done.
What, what, over here where El Perelito's had going to, uh, Redwoodian, I'm assuming that's probably clay?
Where?
Uh, I think so, I think it's clay or truss and it's looking bad.
Where's that?
Uh, Alex was.
Where, where did we stop with the new sewer line that we put, why it's not new anymore, it's probably.
The water line, we stopped at, uh, Coney on Saturday out there. You stopped at a car war, uh, what a car war it was.
Such, such?
Yeah. We didn't go from there on to the manhole.
Okay.
We replaced that with the money that was left over on the sewer project, you know, you've got your ten percent, uh.
It's just really strange that in that section pipe.
Yeah, but it's not been replaced. The other.
That one section right there did, by PBC.
That was, because in that project, you had some sewer money left on the sewer project, only ten percent money for contingency. And we replaced from there, because that, the, the companies that put fiber optics in, Windstream Fiber out there plowed that line in two in about twenty places, and it was just raw sewer everywhere. So we were able to get that replaced back years ago, that piece from there to the rest area.
Oh, I, yeah, I know that, I'm just saying, in between there, it just, El Perelito is different, the rest of the company core channels, I guess you'd say, yes, just draining.
Some of this has been, some of this truss pipe has already been got out. Uh, there's some truss pipe up over your, uh, PBC pipe up over your house, they replaced the manhole, manhole by the energy office. And it's PBC, because there wasn't any pipe that's in it, what, ten years ago?
TJ did that.
And there wasn't, there was no pipe left in there, it was just wide open bottom. But the engineer said we can't leave from one manhole to the next manhole, when reshooting, we got to do it all. So there's just three hundred foot that's been replaced, they'll replace that three hundred foot. Because you're replacing manholes, if you're going by manhole, the manhole's getting replaced. So manholes and, uh, manholes and main are what's being replaced here. Right now, this is, if y'all see anything else on this, there's nothing for us to decide positively now, take this home and study. If anybody sees something different than what we've got here that needs to be looked at, if there's something that takes a higher priority than this, the surveyor is supposed to start working, they've gotta have this all surveyed and graded shut, the flood line and the top of manhole before the engineer can even draw the plans. So the surveyor has been contacting this right here, and he's gonna come do this. If y'all see something that we missed or talk to somebody that we missed, I need to know about it, because this is a best shot guess. This is not an exact science, if that makes any sense. We're, we're trying to take clay pipe out, if there's clay pipe in the ground, it's old, 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 and I know it's leaking. Truss pipe, everywhere we've touched it's leaking. We're not replacing any PBC pipe unless it was in between, you know, from one manhole to the next and replacing both sides of that. We're not replacing any PBC pipe in this. Okay? If y'all have any questions on that, we, there'll be some time to discuss this. Uh, I talked to our lawyer today, uh.
Looks like on Mount View that sidewalks and all that, it looks like they go right back there and there's some dudes.
Other side of the road, we're getting ready to put sidewalks.
It is?
Yeah. Yeah, that was side of the road, and that's clay pipe up through there. Except, right, they replaced a little bit of that with PBC up there by his house. But there again, you're not gonna get to leave fifty foot of PBC in, because you're gonna have to shoot grade, and the grade's gonna be done from the, wherever they start at, you're gonna shoot the grade, you're gonna follow that grade, you're not going to. Because the grade doesn't hit where that PBC pipes at, it doesn't really get to leaving.
Back from our house, the door, I was sitting, and then has Garner's house, next house over, and then some room to replace all that sewer, all the way down through. And then fine job, but she picked up the clay pipe and it fell apart again.
Yeah, and she's in what, three?
Clay pipe is a mess.
It just, it just fell apart, they, they were near the shelter, trying to get rid of the clay pipe.
All right, I'm gonna discuss this a little bit on both the water and the sewer project. As y'all know, last meeting, we approved our memorandum of agreement to proceed with the projects. We've been awaiting proceed, the city got in there and did all of this work, got all of our rate structure set up, got all the sales tax reallocated, and got what we thought was an interest rate to do the water and sewer project, a one point seven five percent. And then they didn't let us go to work for a year. No projects have gotten done at this one point seven five percent interest of them. Three hundred jobs that got funded, not a single job has been allowed to start yet. They're still trying to get rid of the ARPA money. So they get the ARPA money all put out, they're not gonna prove any jobs. But they told us in every other city that you have to be under construction, so you gotta have an engineer, totally engineer, and you gotta get the plan sent to ADQ or the health department, have it completely approved, backed and bid. You have a sixty-day bid process, and you have to have first drawn money by July thirty-first of this year. That is an impossible task to meet. Nobody knows what the interest rate's gonna be, they're not talking, because they don't know what it's gonna be. Uh, they put all three hundred cities that took this money in a position of where nobody knows, you're up, and they don't even wanna talk to you about it right now, and you gotta be under construction, but it's impossible if you're contractor, we know, to get you ready. I talked to our lawyer today on it, she was wanting to come down and talk to us tonight or next month, because we still gotta do some, uh, ordinances to go with the projects. She's, how many days, she said, I need y'all to hold up if you don't mind. She said, we had one city that was where they could do this, out of the three hundred, had one city that's where they could do it. So they went in and did the city's ordinances, did everything to do for that city, submitted the plans, the natural resource, bid them. Natural resource hadn't got half of their work done. So natural resource told them, it may take them three months for them to even get the paperwork out for them. So natural resource, the one city that's ready to go to get the one point seven five percent interest, because if you don't have construct, money drawn by July thirty-first. And I talked to Andy, and Andy said, before anything we've ever done with natural resource, once the memorandum of agreement was signed, that locked you in. You're committed to do the job, you're locked. Natural resource is moving that target right now. So I don't have an answer to anything, and that's all gonna have to be discussed as we move on down the line. You know, the water, we have the money sitting in our rate structure and our sales tax to do the jobs, if the interest don't go too high. But for instance, the water project is gonna be seventy-five percent forgiveness money, you wanna get that done, whatever the interest rate is. The sewer project may be a horse and a different animal. But they were not, I talked to Cherry Rice, who talked to the head of the, of, uh, natural resource, and that person called me and talked to me for over two hours the other day. And he said, we don't know what we're gonna do, we don't, we're not gonna give you the July thirty, the memorandum agreement we signed would be under construction by July thirty-first of next year. He said, we're not gonna give you that day of interest rate. I said, okay, he said, okay, let us get through with the ARPA, not even we'll come back to you. Okay, so I'm just filling everybody in. We did our work and the, the people in the community were told what to do, and we did everything by the guidelines. And now they're getting changed. And I don't know what that means yet, but I just don't wanna surprise anybody. No, but we've done everything we're supposed to do, the engineer done everything he's supposed to do. They were eleven months late and give us a memorandum of agreement out, or we would've been proceeding. We were not allowed to proceed, he gives memorandum of agreement sign, that's in their law. So, just to let you know where everything is at. Okay? Argents on this leak, insurance. If y'all look at that, that's something I've already voted on, I'm just giving you that, that is the, the premium difference to take the policies all up to the replacement of cost value. And we paid, it was twenty seven hundred and thirty dollars and fifty one cents. And y'all have voted on this, that's just the actual breakdown of it. There's nothing to really vote on on that, that's just showing you what they are. And the building values, I think, are all there now. Everything is insured to the value that this league says it should be insured to. It wasn't any about, they had an adjuster. They had an adjuster come down from the insurance bureau and went through and they, what do you call what they do when they're doing their evaluation?
Inspection.
Well, whatever, he come in and they put the value on it, the city didn't put the value on it. Yeah, right, they come down and did that. All right, next thing. Thirteen, not compliance report, we busted on our DMR last month for too much chlorine. Of course, didn't have any uh, uh. What, Chris had me on my mind this week. No, we, the what sodium, uh, we had, uh.
Chlorine?
We had too much chlorine last month and we had no fecal. So this month, our permit said we're legal at four million parts per million chlorine.
Say that again?
Huh?
What, what?
Zero zero three.
Oh, okay.
Part per million chlorine. And we busted because our fecal was too high. But our chlorine was perfect. This is not gonna ever work. It didn't work for four years. I can take the tool, the instrumentation that we checked it with and I can still be passing. But ADQ's come down and wanna know what lab was certifying our equipment, and there wasn't one. So you're gonna bust one eye or the other on this, and the grant that we got turned down on today from Karen Barlow. That's the grant we're trying to apply for to get the UV lighting in. And Karen said on that, she's going to uh, figure out what our points was messed up on. Whether we can improve our uh, points on that and we'll reapply for that again in May. We have four CDs that are coming up due, we really have a meeting early, this meeting was real early this month. We're looking at the CD rates. Do y'all wanna give a direction on him, you're talking about a bunch of money because you're talking both million dollar CDs are up and two other smaller ones? Y'all wanna hold up on interest on those for a month, or do you wanna give Brian permission? He's gonna get the bid back, he's already applied and sent them out. You wanna give Brian, Brian?
I can call him, hold him also, you know.
How do y'all wanna do that, highest bidder gets them? Or what y'all wanna do, you're talking two and a half million dollar worth of CDs need to be renewed right now. But we, we're early in the month and we would have it by normal meeting time, but this is the first day of the month.
That's what we should always do.
Well, they put it in form motion, then he can go ahead, we could do that in minutes, couldn't we, Brian, that he could take those minutes, here the highest person is, we could put the minutes right there and he can go ahead and get those renewed. You'll have to get the minutes.
Now, would that be said though?
They're all on your terms currently. So we're gonna renew them for.
I'm just saying, if you've already got it at this bank and they're, they're at four point nine eight, but the next one's four point nine nine. What does it cost to move it?
It costs eighty, move it behind, which is two dollars and.
Whatever, if y'all wanna approve him to do it, tell him what, if you want that to be, if you want that to be a consideration, if the bank that's got it now's not within.
If they're, if they're within a quarter to a half a point, I'd say just leave it alone, just my thoughts, but it.
Put that in form motion so he can do it, cause he's got it in minutes, that way he can renew them.
I'm with Chris on the highest deal, but my, uh, the interest rates right now are, they're kinda teetering on maybe going back, you know, hearing everything, so. Kind of a crap shoot, really.
He will have the bid, just like he always does, he just didn't have them in today.
I'd say if we had to work real hard for.
Well, I can call him, hold everybody, get on the main, also just.
What do you want, what do you want to be the difference to leave it with the bank?
I'd say if it was in a quarter or a point, just leave it alone.
Make that form motion and we could administer renewal.
Leave it alone if not, highest bidder.
I'll see.
Have motion, so if you get the, when you want.
Yeah.
Then they'll call you here.
Terry Brady? Chris Wood?
Hi.
Alan Moore?
All right. I know we've got one gentleman from the audience that'd like to say something, I don't know about anybody else, we'll start, come through, you wanna say anything?
Uh, thanks, Mayor, I appreciate it. Uh, my name's Ben Derrick and I'm running for state rep for our district, District eighty nine against Justin Gonzalez. And uh, I was born and raised in Amity, spent a lot of time away, I spent twenty-three years in military and retired recently, we moved back, my wife and I. Uh, we, my wife and I are both in this area, uh, so, uh. Anyways, I've got some cards here if anybody would like one, tell me a little bit, uh, tell you a little bit about me and all that stuff, but I would say it would be uh, real easy to uh, have a local guy as your state representative that you can call and. And uh, I know that the mayor said he talked to Terry Rice, but Terry Rice lives in Waldron, so it'd be a lot easier if you could call somebody that live in Glenwood. Um, I live out on Ebenezer Road, uh, is where I live at, so I don't live actually in Glenwood, but I'm here every day, so, uh. And uh, so that's why I'm here, uh, you know, I, I, I will be active, not just on election years, not much the way I am. Uh, I believe if you're gonna be able to take the voice of the people to Little Rock, then you've gotta know what the voice of the people is. And there's only one way to do that, and that's to be active in the communities, and uh, so, uh, that's where I stand on it. Uh, my kids go to Center Point, uh, I unfortunately went to Amity, so don't hold that too much against me, so.
Just goodbye, ma'am.
Yeah. But uh, anyways, uh, I'd appreciate it, uh, just one other thing, Mayor, and I'll shut up, and I appreciate you letting me speak for just a moment, I wasn't expecting to speak, I was just listening, but I appreciate it. Um, I am running as an independent, um, for some people that matters, some people it doesn't. Uh, the reason why I did is because some of the things that are going on in the Republican Party of Arkansas right now, I don't agree with. And we claim to be conservative, but yet there's a lot of things that aren't very conservative. And uh, so I'm just like y'all, I'm tired of being taxed to death, I'm tired of the government being fast and loose with our money. And uh, you know, uh, we're being taxed every which way we can, and in my opinion, somebody's gotta stand up and it's gotta start somewhere. But uh, anyways, that's it, and I say that uh, we're gonna put we the people back in politics and that's really what I am, I'm, I'm going there not to represent a political party anywhere. I'm going there, if I was to be elected, to represent the people, uh, which by the way, all of Pike County is in District eighty nine. Most of Clark County, minus Arkansas, uh, a little bit of Northern Nevada County, a little bit of Garland, and a little bitty piece of Hot Springs County in between, uh, Bonner Dell and Piercey. And uh, but uh, other than that, I sure appreciate it and uh, uh. Again, Mayor, thank you so much for your time, so, but if anybody would like to sign my petition, I have a petition here, I have to get signatures, being as I ran as an independent. Um, I've gotta have them turned in to Little Rock by the end of the month, so I can make sure my name gets on the ballot, so. Uh, but if anybody wants a card, I have some here, it tells you a little bit about me on the back here too, so.
And Terry Rice is our senator, but he covers Amon's history. Senator go, he goes all the way to Fort Smith, he's got the, the state line from Fort Smith all the way down. He's got basically worked on National Forest. In the last race, Pike County is not being done fair to me in this, the way they split the city up, because Kirby Mountain now splits our senators.
Yes.
Pike County's got, Murvisboro's got a senator and Glenwood's got a senator, so the county is split right at Kirby Mountain. On the senator, so it's, it really made the hostility between the two ends of the county be even more, because now we have a different senator representing each other, but that's the way it got done. Ladies, y'all have anything y'all say?
I have something I'd like to say.
Okay.
I heard you rant, I'm serious. Okay, I don't want to say anything, and um, the topic I do wanna cover is a topic no one ever wants to talk about, the forests and animals, but before you shut me off and push me out the door. I want you to know that the top twelve pet travel statistics doesn't make travel town, this is a commerce town. Seventy-eight percent of American pet owners travel with their pets. Fifty-four percent of them, fifty-eight percent of them, and fifty-two percent of them would rather be with their pets than people. I've moved here and um, I'm from Louisiana and I'm outcast and not a local. My sister works for the federal government, she's moving here, she loves the place, I found peace here, um, I've been successful in being a published author here, my son loves to hear, we thrive here. What I can't understand is the locals here. Um, God is always the author of this meeting, I heard y'all say it last time, I was late this time, but if God is at the forefront of everything, God is also a God of divine order. There are people in this town that are born and raised here or very disrespectful, they're disrespectful to policemen, fire chiefs, councilmen, everyone. I have worked for a whole year nonstop, no breaks, volunteering to make this town better, I have never seen one local person lift a finger to do anything. And I think it's sad, and I think integrity would be a lot better in this town if authority was with the head. I mean, respect has to be in order, people can't just run around doing what they wanna do and say what they say. So that's the problem that I have, and it trickles onto negativity. If you want water pumps to work well, God is in charge of that, if you want this to work well, God is in charge of that. When we have negativity everywhere, how can positivity ever flow and no one does anything about it? And that's all I wanted to say, I work really hard to make a difference here and I'm not from here.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I have a question, do you, are you in a position to talk anything about the pickleball court? It's the tennis court now, are you in a position to talk about that tonight?
My throat is about gone, I don't wanna talk to them. The pickleball court, uh, what I told the gentleman to do, and I don't think it's gonna cost the city so much, I think the county will go out and do it. First thing we gotta do is get a daydream pressure wash at the court, the tennis court, because you can't paint. With the trash that's on that court right now, it's gotta be pressure washed. So our intention is to uh, and we're doing a lot of work with the uh, is it three oh nines?
Six oh nines.
Six oh nines, the trustees out of these.
Three oh nines.
Out of the uh, jail, they worked uh, three days last week?
Yes.
And helped us get a lot of our parks cleaned up and mowed around, we still like the sewer plant, we like uh, do we get the river mowed?
You have to mow indefinitely for some of them.
We like the nursery park and then the. Uh, sewer plant, and then we're gonna take them back over and I'll get, they're gonna help us have pressure wash and uh, we're gonna pressure wash that when it dries and we'll, I'm gonna get them to help paint it. Uh, I talked to the gentleman, the city supplied for a grant through one, the gentleman that was here last time, the city filled out a grant application. Uh, the only thing we really need is permanent nets. Cause you can't take a portable net up there, you put a portable net up there, it'll be, I guarantee you it'll be gone by the morning. Those are about eight hundred dollars a port, there's gonna be four ports up there. Uh, somebody could work on, I told him, I said, if you can get eight hundred dollars, we'll order one set of posts and a good net. If you can get sixteen hundred dollars, whatever, the county, we don't have the money to do that. We're having to put a roof on the bathroom up there right now, somebody up there tore the turbine off of the roof of the building, we got a fourteen inch hole in the, in the bathrooms up there right now, we've got the metal's end to put on and we're gonna get the prisoners to put the roof on, or Chris and I will go up there and put the roof on, whatever we gotta do, we're gonna get the roof put on, the metal's end, we're gonna get the roof put on.
I'll really, one thing quickly and relative to what she just said earlier. Uh, I've seen lots of locals volunteer, the sad thing about it is their social media and stuff, the negative ones get all the press time. You know what I mean, they get all the, the whatever, but.
I mean, personally at the animal shelter, I haven't encountered many local people, the high school kids, and I'm gonna be honest, the people that wanna work off debt for their tickets. I'd rather work with the convicts than some of the people in this town, I mean, I haven't seen it, maybe they volunteer at other places, but, but I haven't seen it, and I'm just saying the importance of pets.
Oh, I wasn't disputing, y'all just saying the, the negative get all the press.
Right, but, but a lot of it is disrespectful to our people, I was raised not to disrespect anybody in a position of power, if people in a position of power, the longer time you respect it, the Bible teaches us to do that. So being allowed to do that sets the pace for other people, when, when you allow a person to disrespect you, God doesn't allow them to be disrespected. So why would human beings do it? And no one's putting a stop to it and it's putting a negative rapport in our town, like it's, it's a hindrance whether people wanna admit it or not, you have to be bold, period, I mean, you can't just keep continuing to let it go. It's harming this town, it's negative.
Yeah, I, I wasn't disagreeing with you.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, but I haven't seen anyone at the animal shelter before he had ever lifted a finger to help anybody, like volunteer wise.
I, I don't, I don't know anything about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was asked to get a committee and I've been trying to find some people, we got permission from the school. On the old school property up there, they've got a ball field sitting there, they've got a second ball field that's halfway constructed and was spot to put three more ball fields inside where we got the fairgrounds. The school said, if we can get a committee to start, city can't go there and do it, we don't have a vampire. But if somebody wants ball for the kids over there, we got the court, we got the ball fields. We got these, go clean them up, start using, we rented out one over there the other night and mowed them, we took the city, uh, we took the uh, three oh nines over there and mowed each, I'll go there and look for ball field. But somebody burned a concession stand down, they burned the bathroom down, they burned the bleachers up, they burned the uh.
Duck out.
Duck out up. So we go over there to get a field that's gonna go for shoes and locals have burned, burned up all the buildings of it, nothing, nothing.
And the vandalism at the city park is.
Is terrible.
It's picking back up.
I don't know what we gotta do to get these, you know, that's their property they're tearing up, it's not, it's not my property.
They dug all, threw all the trash into the bathrooms, I guess sometimes we do, dump all the trash in the bathroom.
Can we, can we go back to uh, did it happen tonight or during the day?
I don't know.
Man's going back to locking them up.
My guys. They turn the cameras down.
Here's the thing.
Put them up now, have them pour down, straight paint by thirty meters, we got them up, yeah, we've had them up.
Yeah, I've been, I've built install cameras, I've heard many of them.
One kid stayed on the camera, he wasn't in the camera, so.
The city park up here has been a lot more vandalism than our other parks, the river park and the.
Remember we put the dogs in the park, that was the bike people.
The dogs, the dogs don't, they poop and they don't see.
Did that answer all of your questions?
So do we, do we have to wait for a grant to paint it? Can we get the, we can do the painting?
We're gonna, we're gonna get the three oh nines to have those pressure washed and then that'll lead to dry, cause when you get that concrete that way, it's gonna need to dry up good. And once it gets dried, we'll, and I talked to a gentleman in the pickleball court, he wants to come over there and have my maps, I'm not hard to lay out, I don't know what the, the hammer number is, we'll get them, we'll get them strapped off and we'll get them painted. The painting of them is not a, it's not a big issue, we can get them painted.
Okay, thanks.
We need to get, now we don't have the nets.
Right.
You know, hopefully the grant would come through and we'd get the nets, if they don't, if somebody can help write, do a fundraiser and buy, we went and bought four nets the first time. It's great, I looked them up online the other day, a permanent net, cause you're gonna have to drill a hole in the concrete, put some post in there that the kids take down the line. You put, those are about eight hundred dollars for the nets and the, for one set of posts and the net. So if you get eight hundred dollars, put one, I'd get another eight hundred, I'm second.
Do we, do we provide, is that including labor, the eight hundred dollars?
I can get it, but uh, I mean, I can get the, the three oh nines right now, they've got some three oh nines down there that are very uh, wanna work and uh, we have, one of our uh, employees is, works part-time too for the county as a deputy. And he can go down there and pick them up and I don't think Travis, we can't go there and get them five days a week, that, we can't do that, but I think we can get them a couple of days a week, and there's five of them that come up last time, and they worked, they got a lot of stuff done. The problem we had was the city crew keeping that stuff hustled up, cause there's, there's things and everything. Keeping, it takes almost two city employees just to keep those five something to work with, cause they, they move. Y'all have seen them going down the road with three lawn mowers and their, their jumpsuits in the police car with the lights flashing, and here's three zero turnovers lying down the street, it's kind of, kind of. But they enjoy the work, they're glad to be up here, and I've told Travis, we appreciate them coming, and hopefully they can go and put in there, the county guys have been a big help to us, hopefully they're gonna be a big help to us this summer on getting more done. We just don't have the city employees to do all this stuff, people. But if we can get those guys, that's five guys, if you go get them two days a week, that's almost the workforce I got at the city. But, if we can get those guys, that's five guys, if you go get them two days a week, that's almost all workforce I got at the city.
Half four.
Uh-huh.
Half four.
You know, so I'm, I'm bringing one more guy in that has ended up working for the city, so, uh, they're a big help, if we can get them up here.
I'd like a bunch of them, Jerry.
Say it. Go call.